Educating, informing, serving. FEC TV, keeping government honest.
All right, so we'll call the meeting to order at 3:02 PM on Monday, July 6th, 2020. A motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I think we should add one thing. There's been some conversation about the town hall if we could discuss that quickly, or we want to do that another time.
Can we do it on other business?
If you'd rather, sure.
Yeah, why not?
Okay.
All right, so all in favor, say aye.
I didn't get a motion for a second. I'm sorry, when you make a motion, I gotta make sure I get you, okay? Please.
Okay.
So who made the motion?
I did.
Yeah.
Okay. Al, did you? I can't tell voices. Okay.
Yes, I did.
And who seconded, anybody?
I did.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, I wasn't sure. Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We need to approve the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I noticed one misspelling. It's in the first paragraph. The very first time it refers to Longview, it's misspelled. The rest of the times, it's correct.
Are there any others?
Yeah, I've got one thing. I've got a couple of just minor misspellings, but I do have one, I think, that has to be clarified. On the second page, under seven, calls Chester Hill repairs. There was a void that caused a hole in the road. I think we know what it is, but I think for the record, it may be want to state from due to a repair that was done so-and-so. That's when they did that culvert? Just so it's in the minutes that something happened?
It was not due to the repair.
Oh, that's what Danny said.
No, was not. He found it afterwards because it would have been filled by the cement coming through and it never showed.
Okay, he just said it, the cement didn't get there, which caused the void.
Which meant that, which it meant to him that there was not a void there before.
I spoke to Danny and Danny indicated that that was something that might have been there before the repair. That's what he told me.
Okay.
Okay. Any other, Stan, you have other, you have a few other corrections you want to do?
Some minor, just some minor thing. I can do that with Bill later, if you want, rather than going through every one of them.
Okay, is that okay with everybody?
Doesn't change anything, just.
Well, any other additions or corrections? If not, somebody make a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
Actually, Joe?
Yes?
I don't know whether, if it's just select board who can suggest a correction, but I think in the statement about the little free library, it says, I think that it said something about that I was going to alert the board about it, but I actually had said that it would be up to Kara, who was suggesting construction of a little free library, to come to the library board. I'm not going to bring it up to the library board if, you know, it's Kara's responsibility to do that because it's her idea for the project. You understand what I mean?
So how do you want to change it?
I, well, just-
You can't change it. You cannot change it. You cannot change it. You can, you can make the correction in these minutes and state that those minutes were wrong.
Oh, okay.
Michelle is going to take it to the board.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not going to take it to the board. I had suggested at the last meeting that if she wanted to bring it to the board, she could, that that would be up to the board to decide and that Kara would need to do that, but I'm not going to bring it to the board. It's not really my, you know, my responsibility or my project.
Okay.
Okay?
It's a minor.
Okay, so-
Thank you.
Need, if everybody is satisfied, we need a motion to accept the minutes of June 15th, 2020?
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so Kathy and Stan, you got that, Bill?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The warrants, I did sign them on Sunday, but I would like the board to think about going back to where we all signed the warrants. There's no reason now, the town hall is open, we can put our masks on, there's hand sanitizer, you can come in off hours if that bothers you, but I think it's, I think we should go back to having all five of us look them over and sign them. And that's just my feeling.
It's okay with me.
Okay with me.
It's fine.
Dan?
Sure.
Okay, so then, from now on, I'll make sure that Michelle emails everybody when they're ready. They're usually done on Sunday. She has them done usually by midday or a little later. And what I've been doing, going in on Sunday afternoon and signing them, so. Or you can do it on Monday or any other day you want to, but, so that just be on the lookout for the email from Michelle. And Kim, are you still on there?
I am.
Could you then tell Michelle that we're all going to sign and she can email the entire board?
Yep, I'm writing a note right now, I'll leave it on our desk.
All right, thank you. I don't, we don't need a motion for this, do we?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Highway report, Danny could not make, was not to hear today. We have two excess, we have an excess weight permit for Fitzpatrick Trucking. We need a motion to have Bill sign that and accept it?
So moved.
Second? Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, is there any other issues on the highway report? I have one concern, and that is, and I did talk to Danny today, the signs that he put up on 35 about the potential road closing is very difficult to read. And Bill and I and Danny have talked, and they're going to put, when the road actually does get closed, they're going to put one sign at the stop sign in Chester, and then the other one was going to be put on Eastman Road, and my suggestion was they put one also at the foot of 35 and 121, so that any tractor trailer or car or anybody else who didn't informed, being informed by any, any other method would know that they had to take a detour. And I remember when the road was closed last year by Chester, there were some incidences where people almost got run off the road, and I was one, I got very lucky with the trucks on Eastman because that's a very narrow road and the tractor trailer gets there, it's very difficult to get two people coming around a corner. So I talked to Bill and Danny, so I just wanted to let you know and let you feel, if you feel the same way I do.
Can I suggest one other place? At the bottom of the hill after, right after, or at Pobble Dungeon, so the people don't turn right off the top of Pobble Dungeon and come up either. Okay? And then the other thing I say is that I suggested that people use Route, trucks use Route 121, and I sent that to the Wyndham Foundation and to the market, as well as to every resident in Grafton and you guys and the emergency committee and fire department and rescue wagon, and asked them to alert the mutual aid. And I'm trying to get it posted on that 511, but I have no idea how to do it, and I've written this V-Trans and no one will get back to me, so. And there's no way you can go on 511 and ask them, how do I, you know, get something on your map? There's no button to push, no nothing, so I don't know what to do, other than maybe with mutual aid knowing, maybe they tell 511. I have no idea.
Ken, what about state police? Could they help? Could they answer the question on how to do it?
They might, they might, yeah, I'll try them.
Any other, any other comments on highway report or signage or anything else that we need to discuss?
Well, I know it hasn't rained, it hasn't rained much, but will he be doing some of the roads for grading?
That's a really good question. I don't know, they're going to be doing Culvert Thursday, Friday? Danny's off this week, Mike may be grading now, I don't know. I can't answer that. But then the following week, they're working on Route 35 all week, so I can't answer that, Kathy. I'll try to find out.
The hill's pretty bad, trying to get up it, but.
Bill and I also found out from Danny today that there was a culvert head wall collapse stage road, and they've got some cones up there and that's on the schedule to be repaired. Cause it's tight.
It's not, it's not closed, it's marked, not closed, but it will be repaired.
Any other highway questions? Concerns, comments? Kathy, I think that's a good point, and find out, there are some roads that are getting a little rough, I think.
Pretty tough.
Okay. Clerk and Treasury report, Kim, do you have anything for us?
I sent around all the revenue and expenditure sheets in the balance, I think everybody should have gotten them. Did you? I didn't get any questions on them, I had sent them earlier last week, so I'm assuming everybody's okay, that's the year end and we are now done. The balance sheet, in case you needed any interpretation of it, we ended the total year looking pretty good at, looks like $145,967.85 to the good. So if you look on the end of the balance sheet, the total prior year fund balance, we ended at $68,310, so if we add the two together, our total fund balance is $214,278.17. So, if you have any questions on that, you know, I can help you out with it. So if we take, I did a little bit of figuring and all, obviously this is all preliminary, if we take what was left last year of the $68,310 that we keep set aside, and we're going to add the $145,967, assuming that Fred doesn't find anything that that belongs to, take off what we owe, the retreatment program, because we didn't spend $95,000 of the retreatments, so we're going to move that 95 into a reserve, we still should be left with $119,047 in our fund balance, which is just barely over the 10% of our annual budget that Fred likes us to have in unanticipated reasons. So overall, I think we've held up really, really good for the situation with the COVID and all. I don't know, guys have any questions on the expenditure revenues?
Oh, I think it's good. Much better than I ever anticipated.
It looks very good, Kim.
I mean, there's a few spots that were over on some, I haven't taken a look to see how it's going to compare with the budget we've already implemented, but I guess we'll just have to tweak it a little bit better because there are some items that were overbudgeted by a few hundred dollars here and there that we might want to bump up. And, on another note, which is so wonderful, and I knew it would happen, I already heard from Sullivan Powers today, and I got my checkoff list to begin the audit. I just barely closed out the fiscal year this morning, and I got a call from Sarah, and she's like, here's your list. I'm like, you're kidding me. So they're right on the ball, hopefully if I get everything to them, we can get all this done and over with relatively early. And that's it.
That's good news.
Yeah.
I like it.
And I have a question on the audit. Do we do it every year? Does it have to be every year, or can it be like every two years?
It needs to be every year now because we borrowed money for the town garage, so we're locked into requiring until that's done, but it is really good practice and let me tell you, it's a really good feeling to know that the money we have to deal with in and out and the so many accounts that it's nice to have somebody to check on it.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, I know of-
It's a big expense.
Other boards that I'm on, I do it a little different. Just wanted, oh, my question.
Kim, may I ask you a question? Do they have any, have they given you any date for when they might be here and if there's going to, is there going to be any change due to COVID in terms of them coming and meeting with us, or are they just going to go ahead and meet with masks and things? In terms of, you know, usually they want to take a little look at a few things from the library.
They're good. Yeah, Sarah said that they're, they're all still working from home right now. So they are going to try to actually limit even coming in if need be. And if they do, it's going to be very little, it sounds like, as long as I can get them everything they need, which I should be able to, it's even less, it's only 30 items this time rather than in the 50s because we're on the cash basis now. But they are hoping that they're not going to make, she didn't cross that bridge yet.
Okay, they usually look at just a few specific printouts from the library and some copies of things, so if they haven't specifically included that in your items, is it possible for you to ask them exactly what they would want and then I could give you copies of it? I'm not able to send them electronically very easily from QuickBooks as far as I know. Maybe I could do it in PDF form, but I'm not necessarily sure, I've never done that. I can try, but the easiest thing would be to give you copies and have you send them to them.
Yep, she, I have not even looked over the exact list, I printed it, but she did mention in her email that if there's anything that has any sensitive material to it, that there's another way to get it to her. And yes, she sent me for everything that you have in the T.I.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I've got that there for you. So obviously they're incorporating the library in all of this too.
Okay, so I will just run up at some point in the next couple of weeks and find out exactly, I think I know what they want, but I'll just check.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else?
No.
Kim? Anybody have any other questions of Tim, of Kurt, of, yeah, of Kim, we all set? If not, Town Hall, Town Health Officer, is Rich on?
I am.
Okay.
I'm not too sure what you guys wanted to talk about, the CIC building, I'm assuming it was the town hall.
Well, yeah, it was the discussion of the CIC building.
Okay, good.
I'm attorney.
Sorry, I heard you guys in the background, but I was doing a little bit of work and I wasn't keeping up to what you guys were talking about, sorry. The CIC building, I mean, I guess everybody's been reading the emails, how we retained security, our lawyer, she's been going around and trying to poke the hornet's nest a little bit, and I did get a call last Friday, I believe it was, from the assistant, I don't know exactly know what his title is, assistant director, maybe of the DOE-C, and, you know, he assures me some stuff is going to be looked into, he assures me that some changes with state agencies will do a better job trying to talk to one another. I had strongly suggested to him that some testing is done on that building. I'm thinking at the Department of Environmental Conservation at their expenses, what I'm thinking should happen. And they should start enforcing the laws that, and the guidelines that they put into effect and implement, rather than just throwing stuff at the wall, walking away, then nobody hears from them again. He asked me for my opinion, I gave him an airfall and where it'll go, who knows? And I'm just going to keep an eye on it, and other than that, I'm not too sure, I guess we're waiting for a lawyer's report from what she comes up with. I don't know if Bill received that yet, and I guess we just take it one step at a time.
Hey, Rich, what responsibility does the owner of the building have? I don't hear anything from him, and just even the chemicals in the building, but now there's all those logs down back, there's a wood processing business going on there now.
I have not, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I have not personally spoke with him. He is, as you guys probably know, he get a sizable grant to do some of the testing in the building, the air quality testing in the building for the historical stuff. As of right now, he has got absolutely no skin in the game as far as cleanup goes. I know he has been, I believe he has been informed that, that logging operation should not be in there, but I always get these two confused, the floodplain or way, but it's in one of them, and it shouldn't happen there. Whether the town should give him official notice, I'm not sure, I'm not too sure. Bill, maybe you can answer this. As far as the town health officer job, is me informing him about the floodway is that? I didn't.
No, as a matter of fact, we were told by the state at the beginning of this thing, it was none of our business, what happened in that floodplain. It was their floodplain because it was a, it was an Act 250 permit and it was a PUC operation, and therefore the state was involved, and therefore under the new rules under 4413 of Title 24, they are in charge of anything happens in their jurisdiction and we have no say at all. So I wrote to John Broker Campbell, sending pictures of the wood pile. Let me ask you this, John, has anybody touched that wood pile?
It's bigger. And there's, there's two trucks down there now, and they're, they're processing wood.
What do you mean processing?
Firewood.
Firewood, firewood, there's a business there now.
And where did that wood come from?
I don't know, he buys it, buys it from somebody.
I've heard the name, but I-
When you took a picture of it.
He's hauling wood in there?
Yes, yes.
Tree length wood, you know, log length.
Yeah, I saw the piles.
Yeah, and he's not a process- He's actually cutting and selling firewood, I think it's $185 a cord delivered and $150 a cord picked up, I think something like that.
Who is he?
Don't know who he is.
I can get the name for you, Bill, it escapes me right off the top of my head. He's a fairly-
Okay, I'm going to call John Broker Campbell this afternoon then, because he has not responded to me, and this is, this is blown you, this is their job, this is another thing that they're not doing.
And I had mentioned it also, but I didn't get any response, but you know, and there goes to show you right there that this landlord really, I mean, he knows he's not supposed to be doing things like that when everything going on down there, you would think at this point he would be extra careful. But, I mean, if that don't tell us everything we need to know.
Yeah, Rich, also, you know, who gave permission to have the solar system put in there?
Well, that was-
The PUC.
Huh?
The state. PUC.
But that, isn't that based on that the place is cleaned up?
No.
Al.
I was only sure of that, I think.
There's, Bill or myself don't-
We tried really hard, John.
Yes.
And the PUC basically said, whatever he voluntarily does is fine, but it's really none of our business. That's what they said. And John Broker Campbell made them, the only thing they had to change in their whole plan was to move their logging operation, which, and I thought that was part of the logging operation, they cut some trees in the back in order to get rid of some of the shade, and those trees were going to, and the materials to put in the field where it's going to be stored right behind the building, but that's in the flood, partially in the floodway. They told him he could not store them there and he cannot put his wood there, he had to move everything out of there, in this plan, so they made him change that, but then he, then everybody just ignored it, and I don't know where this logging, I, I thought that was part of the cleanup, I had no idea.
No, there's another, there's another business in there now.
Yep, yep. And like I say, I mean, you know, I, I don't know what is in our best interest, in my opinion. The state has proven that they don't have any interest or whereabouts or enforcing their own laws, so at the local level, do we have to start intervening on a few of these things? I don't know. I really don't know.
Hey, Bill, the guy's name is Scott Hitchcock.
Yes, yep, yep.
Scott Hitchcock, where's he from?
Athens.
Bill and I did talk to the attorneys this morning to get a-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, no, let's finish this. Where is he logging? Whose land is he logging? Who's the forester?
He ain't logging anything, he's just bringing in tree length wood and then processing it into firewood.
Is this Hitchcock trucking?
What?
Is that Hitchcock trucking?
No, I don't know what his business name is, that's who owns the wood processor, and he is cutting up firewood there and he's bringing in tree length wood to cut up. He isn't logging or doing any of that.
No, but certainly anybody could, anybody could buy a log load, just can cut it up and sell it, and that's what he's doing.
Well, I didn't know if he was foresting right there, because if he's doing that, then the forester has a plan to get rid of the wood.
Well, there's nothing to forest right there, that he's gone in there as a business and that the owner of the property has let him in there to use it.
Exactly. And he assured me that no, the landlord did, well, he did say nothing will happen inside the building as far as tenants, so. Like I say, again, I mean, that kind of tells us everything we need to know. I mean, it's, it's not, it's, the responsibility factor is just, is just not there.
Oh, can I ask a question? And Bill, if you could find out, if he got a grant to do all of this cleanup supposedly and nothing's coming from his pocket, is there any chance of us recouping from that grant, the charges it takes for our legal fees?
The grant so far was just for some of the testing and showing exactly how it will be cleaned up, when and if the time comes. So that's a whole different-
But we're not talking about chemicals, we're not talking about chemicals, Richard. We're talking about what was there historically before the solar project even began, that's what you're talking about. That's what the grant was for, and that grant came, I don't know what, what he has to do with that grant, that grant came from the Wyndham Regional, and I don't know who's obligated to pay back any portion of it, or who had to do the cash, I have no idea.
And that grant will just educate me on this, that grant was actually for cleanup? That wasn't for all the, some of the testing that historically was done in that building? That was for the actual cleanup of the building?
No, it was for the, it was for the Brownsfield that already existed.
Right.
And it was to explore, explore, test to see what exactly the contamination was, so that they can decide whether or not anything had to be cleaned up. They, I don't think any of it's cleanup.
Right, because the cleanup, my understanding of this, once they reach, once they get the mitigation plan in the place, now it's a whole different circumstance of cleaning up the building, whether it be the chemicals, the outside, trying to get the building up to stuff so they can lease it, whatever. Now that part, in my, to my understanding, is a whole hell of a lot higher, and they really like to see the landlords to have some skin in the game at that point.
But didn't Scott, didn't Todd Costro say, they're not even looking at, they're not even looking at air quality, they're not even looking at the building, they're looking at what's in the ground.
Well, they have done some air quality testing, but it was explained to me how the air quality testing is, is, what, the air quality testing that they are currently doing is a very narrow scope of what was historically, what they're looking for, historically what happened in that building. And I specifically asked a guy from the, I always get his name screwed up, the Department of Environmental Conservation, I specifically asked of him, what, if you're doing that air quality testing for that narrow band of what you're looking for, historical contamination, what happens if you stumble across something else? What, will it just be ignored? And he assured me it would not be ignored, but they are not specifically looking for anything related to matrix, that's not within their scope of work.
Yeah, that, that was my- Yeah, that, that was my point of this whole thing.
Yep.
Matrix is not what they're after.
And that's, and that's what we gotta try to push the, the Department of Health into getting down there and doing some testing to that building itself. It may be perfectly safe and non-contaminator for all I know. I mean, I'm no scientist. I have no idea. My suspicion is a lot of that stuff is within, the chemicals that they were processing is within the structure of that building. I don't see how it couldn't be, to be totally honest, but I do not know that for a fact.
Um, Rich, if you wear your fireman's chief hat, what about the no assistance of fire expression and alarms, no alarms? Can that be enforced?
To this, it can be enforced by the state fire marshal. The only thing I could do, if, if people wanna take the responsibility, I mean, I suppose we could at this point close down the building still and call it a safety issue, but without the state fire marshal's support, I, I don't know as far as the fire chief's hat, if we want, wanna go down that road. We may at some point wanna go down that road as the town health officer had. If he starts getting into that building and having new people in there as a tenant, then that's, that's gonna get even a little more dicey. I mean, a scathing report already went out by the town fire, by the state fire marshal and to this day, and that was back in last December, and I contacted them a couple of times and.
Twenty-six.
And, and so far, I was in there, oh, within the last week and the fire suppression and the fire alarm system is still not operational.
But, but you know, Rich, the town is really involved into this and the owner, as, as I know, doesn't have anything to do with it and I, I don't understand that.
Honestly, John, I don't either. And at, at some point, and I believe this, I believe, I probably shouldn't be throwing around my opinions, but I believe as soon as we cross the threshold, threshold or when these, when, when, when these mitigation plans are actually arrived at and become public knowledge, then they're gonna turn out and say, okay, you know, this is gonna cost you, you name the figure, a hundred thousand dollars and I think it'll be more, but they're not gonna give this guy any more money unless if he's got some skin in the game, in my opinion. And what he's gonna do with the building at that point, that, who knows? But no, but no, you're exactly right. And he is saying he's an innocent victim with this. He knew nothing about any of the historic contamination, nothing about the building when he had bought it cuz he bought it on a tax sale. He says he knows nothing about it. Now, I assure you, he knew something about it cuz he lined his pocket with Matrix money and he's owned, I believe he, I could be wrong and have to look at the dates, but I believe he owned the building before they moved in.
Well, may, maybe this would help clarify a few things. Bill and I had a discussion with the attorney and she's about ready to, to write the, the report of what she has found. She shared with Bill and I this, this morning that she was having a very difficult time getting any response from any of the agencies. But all of a sudden now, she, in her words, she's rattled their chains and they seem to be now a little more responsive and cooperative. The report that she will give us, and I think she said it would be in a couple of months, will be, it will be a public document. It'll be filed publicly for anybody to look at. So that can, that can go, so that might have some bearing on what, how the state moves on going forward because it is, it will be a tell-all of how screwed up they have been and how they have not reacted to this possible very serious situation.
Yeah, what she, what she's going to do is her report will give a history of what happened, what is, what is there now, what we need to do and how to wrap, wrap it up and he, and she will advise us on what actions we need to take if any more since this is done. And it'll be, their goal is to get it to us by August 1st, that report. That report then will be public and, and if the idea, then we talk about enforcement, what we're gonna do if somebody tries to move in there, that report will handle all that. If somebody tries to move in there, what we should do, including giving them the entire report so that they know the risk that they are taking by moving in there is, and, and I don't know if she's gonna address the fire suppression system, but I think that would do it. It, it, but you can see how frustrating it is dealing with this thing for, from two, for two years, dealing with this thing when the state doesn't wanna do anything and now I find out it's an Act 250 property and there's no Act 250 permit for a logging operation? That's outside the building. That is a change of permit. There is no doubt that's a change of permit and their whole reason that they gave me before is whatever happened inside the building's not a change of permit. There's less traffic, there's this, that and the other thing. Now they got a logging operation and they're still not gonna do anything about it? I'll find out.
Well, you know, and again, is it something, how deeply do we wanna be involved in this as a community? I don't know. I can certainly call a landlord. I can certainly email them, but is that the road you guys really wanna cross? I don't know the answer to that.
I, I think you should wait for the report because I think it will, will, will be a public, and it'd be a public knowledge thing and that might make him think twice. I don't know. But, but going back to what Kim said, you know, this has cost us a lot of money and I'm just wondering if there isn't anything we can get reimbursed on from the state or some, without going through the process of a lawsuit and all that other kind of stuff. I don't know.
Yeah, but Joe, how much, how much do we want?
The attorneys are gonna handle that. The attorneys are gonna handle that part, I think. And they're gonna, they're gonna address that part.
Joe, how much do you want the town to spend?
I don't want town to spend this.
How much is it gonna cost if the whole damn thing blows up?
Um, I don't know about that, but I, I, we're really involved into it and more and more every day and the owner is not even involved at all and I would think he has some responsibility cuz.
Okay, okay, so, so what does it cost to take him to court to make him take responsibility?
That's the problem.
And if the state agents, in the state agency, it doesn't cost them anything to take him to court, but you, you hear what we're dealing with the state agencies. None of them will do anything.
How, how, how liable is the town of Grafton just having knowledge of what's going on down there?
That's why, that's why there is this report. We're doing our due diligence. That's why, that's why they're doing this whole thing as, as he said this morning, that once we know, we need to do due diligence to protect the public and the users. That's what we've done. We've done the report. They're gonna finish up the report by August 1st. We're telling everybody what we know. It's a public record. It's gonna be right out there in the open and it is going to state that we've done everything possible and that the state, the state of Vermont has refused to do anything.
And that takes.
They're gonna name names in the report of who they talked to and what they have not done as well as what they have done.
And that report takes responsibility away from the town. So it eliminates any, any kind of responsibility if the building blew up or whatever the case might be cuz we have done everything we need to do.
And I think that would force the state's hand just for, you know, good public, I would think that would force their hand at that point to step in and intervene and do something at some level. I mean, but I mean, we've been trying to get them to do something for, well, me a number of months and Bill for 12 months before that.
Well, Rich, you hope, you would hope that, that, that would happen, but so far it hasn't, so you can only be optimistic, but, but that's it. Do we have anything else? Cuz we have a long agenda to go here, so anything else we need to talk about?
No, I just, I just.
I just wanna tell you what they said about cost. They will do this thing. They've already done $3,000. They will do it by August 1st and they cap it at $5,000. That will be the report. And that, by the way, is your whole budget for attorneys for this, for this fiscal year, the fiscal year that just started.
I just got, well, I just got one thing. I, I read that brief history that came from the, from the attorney's office and it did say when Unified was there, then the building was closed for like 10 years and then blah, 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 and then Matrix moved in. There was a period of time in there for, I don't know what, maybe six years, maybe 10 years, that there was another company in there that had that whole building and that was CIC. That wasn't even mentioned. I mean, if you're just gonna have a history of what went on down there, CIC should be included in that history. Cuz that was a pretty good period of time that they were down there.
This, this report that the attorneys have, have, what, what report are you referring to?
It was just a letter that came back from Sam and the most from.
Okay, well then we oughta, we oughta make sure that they understand that there was somebody else in that building.
That's, that's all I'm saying.
The report needs, and I agree with you, the report needs to be factual.
Right.
Are, are we gonna get to see like a copy of the report before it's finalized so that allows us to look for errors or, or omissions ahead of time?
I, I, I think Alan, what will happen is the report will go to the board for us comment and then, then it will be go back to them for, for a final process before they file it as a public document. That's, that's what I was to believe.
It would seem.
We will get.
It would seem important that we get to review it and, and look for errors and, and just like, things like Stan just pointed out.
No, I, I.
$5,000 sounds like a lot of money, but the scenario I can see happening is when the report comes out and, and it's determined 100,000, 200,000, whatever the number is for cleanup, he walks away from the building and the town is stuck with it. I think $5,000 to protect the town is money well spent.
You're right.
No question about that.
When you get the report, will I be in that loop?
Absolutely.
Yeah, what I'll do is I will, I'll, I'll, as soon as this meeting's over, I'm gonna, I'm gonna write to Sam, tell her about CIC and, and ask her to send the report to us first so we can correct any, any known errors in there before they finalize it. Okay.
Okay, can we move on or?
Hey, just one question. Hey, Rich, are you hanging around or are you leaving?
Uh, that'll be up to you guys. I'll hang around if you need me. If you don't, I'm gonna go back to work.
Hey, hey, Joe, I'm just wondering because Rich is here, should we just move that town pool up or you still want to keep that as, as public or, or other business?
I was gonna bring the same thing up. I agree.
I would rather have, if Rich is here, he's got other stuff to do, let's do that town pool thing and.
That's fine. I, I talked to Rich, Rich emailed me over the weekend. I emailed, emailed him back cuz he wanted to test and I said, no. I said, as far as I'm concerned, we can verify that the, the board voted to close the pool. The signs are on their way and there was no need to test, but we should discuss it now cuz people have been swimming in there. But I think, you know, if we tested, then I think we take the liability back. That's just my opinion.
I think that, you know, based on, I, I think we made the decision to close the pool. I think it should stay that way. My original thought process was with the swimming prohibited signs, I didn't like that, but I thought that that was the only way that our insurance company could allow it. I would rather see either no signs put down there or some sort of swimming risk type of thing as opposed to swimming prohibited. That's just my thought and I'm not sure what the insurance company says.
The insurance adjuster and I talked about that and he said that the best, the best solution is, is swimming prohibited and then if people swim down there, oh, well, I mean, you don't care. But if you say swim at your own risk, are you, are you saying, or could it be argued in court that you were saying it's okay to swim here, but you do it at your own risk? And, and, and the whole idea is to save us from liability.
So if somebody's in there and the, and the sign says swimming prohibited, I mean, there, there's, there's nobody, the constable's not gonna go down and, and arrest people or anything like that.
Unless you guys tell them to.
I think the sign says prohibited and we are not going to enforce it and the sign is there just to cover our, our liability.
That's it.
I mean, that was sort of my understanding on it. I just don't like that, but if that's, if that's maybe the insurance thing, then that's, that's fine.
Well, that's what they, that's what they recommend, Stan, so I think you have to go by what they interest.
Right.
You gotta cover our liability, so you certainly would wanna do what they say.
But if somebody's swimming there, nobody's gonna kick them out.
No.
No. But there's no testing either gonna take place.
Nope. No, and I, and I told Rich that the board would then let him know whether or not they wanted, he wanted to have testing on an interim basis until the sign went out or nothing at all. So that's why we need to talk about it and obviously we shouldn't do anything personally.
Well.
That's my question. Yep.
Is there any idea when the signs will be here?
No. They, they ordered two weeks ago. Generally speaking, they, they're here right away. I asked Danny to call. I didn't realize he was out and so I will call.
Should we follow Danny's lead and put up a temporary sign until we have the official signs?
It depends on how, if it's, if it's gonna be a long time, we will, yeah.
So that was my only question to Joe. If it is gonna be a while, we, we probably should test cuz people are gonna swim there anyways, just to cover ourselves, but if you think they're on the way, I mean, then, yeah, I think.
Yeah, but once you test it, then, then you, you take ownership of it again, so.
I wouldn't, I, I think the thing, if all else fails, if it's gonna be a period of time before the signs come green, in the ground down there that says no dogs, remove the no dogs allowed and move the green sign.
In a few more weeks, it's gonna be green anyway, so there's just no water exude going in there.
There's, there's cold spring water flowing into that pond.
Yes.
In hole.
Yeah, right now.
Why, why not?
That's how clean that water is. It is really clean.
Why don't we do what Wade Bouchard recommended, is put up the sign and if we don't have them, why don't we just put up a temporary sign and that covers it?
Yeah.
Well, I think that's. That's what you should do.
Yeah, so I say, you already got a post in the ground there. Use the post and put up a sign that says swimming prohibited.
Okay.
We'll, we'll do that. If we, if the signs are not gonna be here next day or so, then we'll just put up temporary.
Okay. And, and remove the no dogs?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cuz we don't care if the dogs going in and out, it doesn't make any difference.
They did anyway, so what's the difference?
They did anyway.
Take the dog sign down and paint it over it, use that, recycle it.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go. Okay, so could we move on with the swimming pool now in a CIC building?
Yep.
Rich, you could stay on if you'd like or you can go and do something else.
Well, I gotta go back to work, but if you guys happen to need me, call myself.
All right, thank you.
Have a nice afternoon.
See ya.
All right, the, the next item is the James and James agreement for the fuel oil for the town hall.
Yep.
I make, I make the motion, we accept their bid for the next year.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of having James supply fuel oil for the coming year, say aye?
Aye.
Closed? Okay. Listers, you're on.
Okay. Regarding the appraisal, reappraisal to start with, I believe you all received a draft mailer, which was given to you by Bill Kearns. Did you all get that?
Yeah, just a second, I'll put it up.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, okay, so basically they plan to start the initial property listing process next month. This mailer will be going out at the end of this month. We anticipate that they will then shortly thereafter start calling people. They're gonna do all of the appointments and they will be setting appointments with people to go visit their properties and measure them only. There will be no inside activity and all social distancing will be maintained. And this will go on for. Um, and this will go on for, you know, probably from now till fall, they'll cover the whole town. And uh, then after that, depending on what's happened with the COVID nineteen restrictions, they may try to get interior, I'm sure they will try to get interior information when possible about all properties in town as well. And this process is scheduled to be completed by April first of next year in two thousand twenty-one. To go along with this, uh, we anticipate a heavy phone calling uh, related to the town hall. And you can see in the draft mailer, we have left blank what the phone number is. Our intention is, and we talked with Bill Kearns and Kim the other day last week, is to uh, install a dedicated line to the Lister's office, which will have an answering machine on it. Uh, Bill researched it. It's gonna cost thirty-nine twenty per month. There'll be about a sixty dollar installation cost and um, we will buy a phone with an answering machine. And this will be charged to the reappraisal reserve that we presently have. It will not be part of the regular general budget. Um, so, yes, so any questions?
I have a question on, um, when was the last appraisal, town appraisal?
Two thousand and nine, which is now eleven years ago.
Could you have that date on this letter so people would know that it's been quite a while since we had it done? Would that help?
Yeah, I'm sure we could do that. Uh, we, we will have him do that because this is just a draft. It hasn't gone out yet. Uh, we will have him put that in the letter.
That's a good idea.
But is this, this is a mandated reappraisal, is that correct?
Yes, well, and we uh, we have a contract with them. Everybody signed the contract.
I mean, the state has told us we need to reappraise, is that correct?
No, that is not correct.
It's not correct, okay.
But we need to reappraise just from the fact that it's been eleven years.
Okay.
The state only requires it if you're above a certain CLA or below a certain um.
We're, we've been close.
I was gonna say, haven't we been close to that?
Very close.
Very close.
They keep changing the level and we've just been under the, you know, whatever the requirement is. And when they change the level, what was last year then becomes it's okay this year.
Well, with the recent, with the recent sales, I think there were nine homes on the contract. Uh, prices might be going up again.
That's correct. I, I would say that prices are stabilizing, but they are stabilizing probably a little bit less than what they might be assessed for.
Okay.
I, I know that some of them are for sure. So there's still some properties in town. Um, you know, our, our CLA or level of assessment per the state is about seven point three percent over right now, according to them. Based on sales for the last three years.
And ten percent is the magic number, is that correct?
Um.
Fifteen.
Fifteen percent.
Okay.
A couple of years ago, we were at seventeen and eighteen uh, percent CLAs. And they've been dropping uh, each year for the last three years.
It used to be, I think, one twenty even. It was pretty high and they've been bringing it down because it's just not, you know, makes everything invalid practically. But that's a good idea to add the date to that letter. It's, or just say it's been eleven years, you know, since two thousand nine. And um, uh, Bill Kudjasky, we talked with him about recent sales versus what's going on, you know, what had been going on. And it's the same thing all over the state. So this is nothing that nobody else isn't dealing with either. And they're very cognizant of the fact that the, what's going on now has as much to do with COVID as it has to do with anything else.
Any other questions on uh, what's gonna be happening here?
What about that uh, that uh, cartographic technology, something, is that?
Okay, that's next.
Okay.
That has nothing to do with the reappraisal.
No, I just make sure I'm not gonna lose you, that's all.
Okay. If we're done with this, we can uh, talk about the cartographics.
Is everybody, any other questions of the reappraisal? Okay, so go ahead.
Okay, the Cartographics Technology Group uh, are the ones that um, were selected by the state to work with our town and for the statewide property parcel project, which is now online. Um, and I believe we sent each one of you uh, a printout of your own uh, parcel. Except uh, for you, Joe, we only sent you a partial one.
Yeah, I see.
There are a few other parcels attached to that. Um, and this is as of the date of two thousand and eighteen. So we're two years down the road from that date. Our maps are presently two years out of date. So uh, what we want to do, and we have been working with this group, Cartographic Technologies out of Putney, Vermont, is um, assigned, getting a contract approved with them to do our mapping, our tax mapping in the future. Which uh, basically, we will be updating, the grand list will get updated on the maps every year. Uh, all of the names will get updated on the maps every year. Um, the only thing that we have to really provide them, other than the grand list, is subdivisions and when parcels are combined. So it's going to greatly simplify and get us into the uh, twentieth century regarding our maps, which have not been in that state even since we have all been listers in this town. And uh, they weren't up to date when we started back in two thousand and nine. So it's, it's taken a long, it's taking a long time, but we need to get this done. So the, the contract, I think you see the price is seven thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars. And that's for this year only. And it's the creation of the paper tax maps, which is the big nut here. And they will be in color and they will have uh, all sorts of doohickeys on them that uh, are very nice to have, uh, which are simple to do with GIS mapping. Uh, they will be updated to the two thousand twenty year. Townview software uh, will be, which we have presently, and that's what we sent you, is it's soft, is your parcel based on two thousand eighteen software. That will be updated to the two thousand twenty. Uh, I'll add, we'll add buildings and address numbers to the tax maps and add all the owner names to the tax maps. Um, so this one-time cost will be seven thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars. Going forward in the future years, it's only gonna cost a thousand bucks to update the maps every year. We'll get new maps and the grand list will be updated. And the maintenance will continue at a thousand dollars a year, basically um, for the foreseeable future. Now, the cost for this, yeah, uh, Kim, Kim will, yeah, yes. Uh, Kim? Yes? I wanna, uh, Kim is uh, has the money where this will be charged. In other words, this is not coming out of the general budget. It's going to be coming out of the preservation funds, which Kim can uh, discuss if you've got questions there.
Hey, Hardy, one thing really quick on this though, is this gonna show all town properties also?
Yes.
So the cemeteries are gonna come up and be?
Yes. Now, we can give you a copy of this Town View uh.
From two thousand eighteen.
From two thousand eighteen. You can put it on your computer, just like I have at my, at my home here. It's on this computer I'm looking at. And uh, and you can, all can look up and ask, access any property in town by parcel number, name, or by street. And it'll have all the grand list information on it, uh, as well as the mapping information on it, which includes buildings, roads, streams, topography, topography, uh, lines, et cetera.
Will this be available to everybody or just?
Yes, it will be available to all of you, so, every one of you on the select board and anybody else you want to give it to. It's town property.
So Hardy, well, what about the public? And researchers, are they gonna be able to retrieve anything from this? And if so, where, do they pay for it?
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is that, you know, when we initially talked about this, um, we were gonna let you control that. Um, you know, if you want to charge for it, you can. And the, the town can do that. We don't have to give it out to anybody unless we put it online, which we don't intend to do. Other than.
We don't know if the these, the state mapping is gonna pick it up.
The state mapping uh, which is done through two thousand eighteen, there have been no concrete plans since then to update to future years and for them to pay for it. So I, I don't, we don't know where that's going. But basically, we will have the data available if we wanted to update state maps at a later date too. The data will be.
Have you seen um, the quality of the product? Have you seen an example of their work already of what, what we're getting?
Yes, and uh, I think we even have some in the uh, in the town hall. Uh, it'll be much superior to anything that we have right now, much superior. Again, it'll be in color as well.
I think it makes all sense in the world. I think we've been so far behind with actually mapping properties, even town properties and things like that. I think it, I think it's a, it's a great thing.
Oh, there's no question. Way to go.
It's a no-brainer.
You know, you bite the bullet on the seven thousand and then you maintain it for a thousand dollars a year after that. I think it's, it's absolutely.
Yeah, and, and the seven thousand again, um, Kim has uh, money available, I think thirteen thousand, you can correct me, Kim.
Fourteen.
Fourteen thousand in this private preservation of records reserved provided by the state of Vermont. And that's where we're gonna, you know, this is preserving our records. And that's where we.
And then do we wanna budget then for the next years for the thousand dollars? Or can we keep on going? Is there preservation of records that keep on funding or?
I, I don't knows, I don't knows if I wanna deplete that account because that's the only thing that I have to, to um, to digitize and to scan all of my land records and um, all of my papers in there. So I, that's gonna have to be up for discussion at budget time.
Yeah, I think it should be.
Should be just a budget item, an line item is, right.
Right. And actually, the, the money from the preservation, it, it, not to correct you, Hardy, but it doesn't come from the state. It comes from recording and for every recording, I set money aside. So when researchers come in and um, I record a mortgage for every page, I take six dollars of it and it goes aside to the preservation fund. Um, so that's my only concern, which I hadn't given it a thought that. Are, is this just something that's gonna make me able to, to print off and give to the researchers and charge them? Is that what it's for? It's just a better product that I'm giving them so they can't really access us?
That's what I would say. Cause you can give them now the grand list data and the map at the same time if a real estate agent comes in as an example.
So we're not really, I don't know how to do it. Um, they're talking about the importance of us going online with everything because of the whole COVID and how much easier it would be for the public and the researchers to get everything online. I don't knows if that's making. I, I like this, but I'm, it's not another step. If we could take one more step and make it public and then I can get the money from them.
Well, if the state, if the state picks that up as far as their state mapping goes, they're the ones who've been urging everybody to do this to begin with. Um, you know, we know how the state works. But we can talk with Susan about that. As far as we understand, it would, if the state, we're gonna update every year, we would be in a position where we would be part of the, of the state that would be updated to their state maps.
So are all the other towns leaving it just like this? Only the people within the actual town, uh, actual um, town clerks and listers are the only ones that can access this? It's not open to the public with other towns? Are they doing the same thing?
Well, I think some towns have it online.
No, there are a lot, there are a lot.
It's whatever the town wants to do.
There are a lot of towns, a lot of especially bigger towns who have access online uh, to anybody. You can go into Brattleboro and look at any parcel. And uh, it's just a question of how, how you wanna disseminate it.
Okay, so maybe that's a question I can ask like Brattleboro and find out, you know, do they recoup any of the charges that we normally would do within the office?
Yep. And if you go, if you go on the state mapping thing, you'll see uh, which states, which towns are online and you could talk with smaller towns to see, you know, apples to apples or you, yeah, we can talk about that later, but, but it's definitely, yeah.
It's a good step in the right direction.
Yes.
I think so for sure.
So do we need a motion for this?
I don't think so. I think uh, it de- depends on what your policy is as far as who signs the uh, the contract. It's seventy-five, three hundred dollars.
You gotta, you gotta make a motion.
I would, it's over five, it's over five thousand.
I would make a motion that we proceed with a contract for digital mapping by Cartra, Car, Cartographic Tech. Um, with the, with the money originally to be, come from the um, budget for documentation. In the future, we may come up with a different system, but at least we can get it going for this year with the money we have on hand.
Can we have a second?
I'll second.
So we got Stan seconded, Bill and Alan made the motion.
Who's gonna sign it?
Huh?
I make a motion that we. I make a motion, we have the town administrator sign it.
Come on.
Okay. So all in favor of the, that motion? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay. And then that's something to put in notes and that's something we can discuss when budget time comes in a couple more months to how we wanna proceed with, with this whole thing. And maybe, Kim, you could do some research in the meantime.
Yeah, yeah.
From some of the other towns and see how they're handling it as well.
It's, it seems like if it's on the website, then you can't charge anybody. You know, it's available to them, they wouldn't need to pay for it. If, if they're coming into the office and they're asking for it, then you could ask for money. Um, so it's just a matter of whether we're gonna try to get it to, to uh, pay for itself or whether we're gonna just add it as a line item in the budget. It's definitely worth doing, just a matter of working the details out, how to pay for it.
Yeah, there is a potential, a potential for lost revenue on, you know, kind of, but there is that potential.
Okay. Um, do you have virus that's on the thing? Is there anything that we need to talk about virus?
I don't have anything in particular. Kim, do you have anything for the office or anything?
Uh, no, other than the office is open just to the lobby portion and um, I'm still doing appointments only for researching. Um, masks are required and signing in at the door. Um, I just got a shipment in of hand sanitizer, um, hand wipes. Um, I have the wall hand sanitizer, so I'm fully stocked just in case something else happens. God forbid, and yeah, no, we're, and everybody seems to be abiding by the masks. Which is very nice.
And, and signing in.
Yes.
Is this the place to discuss, uh, Joe? I know you wanted to move towards an in-person meeting rather than a online meeting. Is, is this uh, the appropriate place for that discussion to take place under, it's all relative to the virus?
Yeah, but it was three to two and so uh, I, I, I think it's a, it's a moot point.
I don't see any way of doing it.
Yeah, Joe, uh, my uh, thoughts, if there's one no, that's the majority.
Right, so that's the way I looked at it, so.
But it, but you, but you probably wanna bring it up and discuss it in a meeting, don't you? You know, otherwise, otherwise how did you come to the decision?
Well, you can discuss it in the meeting and I think you should discuss it in a meeting. But, but because of the way the law is written, I see no way of guaranteeing a room big enough to handle twen- uh, you know, half the, half the people. What if ninety people show up for your meeting? You cannot have the meeting. And that happened in the town south of here according to what I heard. And the, and the people almost rioted because they want, it was a very important meeting. So don't have the meeting that way, then you don't have to worry about it. Because if, you can't meet, if you can't fit the people in the room and outs, even outside, you're limited in the amount of people you can gather.
I, I think in a minimum, we gotta wait till July fifteenth and that's when the current, um, I don't know if you call it emergency status is, is going to. As far as I know, that has not been extended. So I'm sure on July fifteenth, there's gonna be an announcement made, so. And that is, uh, that is before our next meeting. So I'm sure on July fifteenth, there's gonna be an announcement made, so, and that is, uh, that is before our next meeting. I think we have to at least wait until that, when, when that decision is, is made by the state.
That's fine. I just thought it was an appropriate time that we have that discussion.
Right, that's okay.
Yep.
I, I have um, an update from the library and then a question. The, um, the question is, is that, well, the update is that the library board has revised the buildings and grounds um, policy and use form because we're, we're being asked if we can um, provide the library lawn for events. Um, and so we've looked up all the ACCD guidelines and we talked to folks from the Department of Libraries and we talked to V L T C. And um, we are going forth with the V S O on the library lawn. Um, they, everybody has to be masked, it can't be more than a hundred fifty people, they will count. There has to be social distancing. Keith came and measured the lawn for us and did the calculations to make sure that we could safely fit a hundred and fifty people. So we've given permission for Lisa and the V S O. Um, and uh, we now also have our re, our phased reopening plan and as soon as my sneeze shield comes from um, a place in Claremont or uh, in Hinsdale, we're going to start opening by appointment, three days a week, the week. So that's an up, just an F Y I and an update for you. But do you need to have copies of our um, buildings and use plan with these uh, COVID-related requirements that we're attaching to it and also our phased reopening plan, just so that you have it on record for us as a, um, you know, as a municipal library? Or should we just keep that on file here?
I, I would think if you just had it there, I, I don't know. I mean, that's my opinion.
Yeah, there isn't really.
Business, actually.
Yeah, different, different select boards and different municipalities handle it differently, so it's really actually just up to you. It, if, if you're fine with me just sort of letting you know what's going on. Um, and then if you ever need to see it, it's here, um, or I can give you a copy, whichever you prefer.
Works for me.
That, that works for me.
Um, is, is your plan something that should be shared with the fire department and EMS folks? Is there anything in the plan that would be helpful knowledge for them to have ahead of time?
Uh, uh, the V S O is gonna, Lisa said the V S O will be um, contacting um, the fire department um, about the event. Um, we, I think that we, we can require that, that can be one of our requirements, that who, that third-party groups do contact agencies, fire and rescue.
Well, I think if you have a plan that you're gonna follow for events, it would seem reasonable to share that with them. For, or the library to do that, to share it.
Oh, I see, you mean for, for our COVID-related requirements.
Correct.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we can definitely do that. That's a good point, Al.
I, I have a question and I have nothing against the concert, but my concern is who's gonna monitor the masks, the parking?
It has to be me. Um, well, I don't know about the parking.
If some, if, if a group from, comes from out of state or whatever without masks, are they gonna just be allowed to stay there within the crowd?
No.
Why, why, why wasn't this done at the, at the Wyndham Foundation Fields where there's much more um, openness and you can spread out more? This is, you're gonna have a concert on the library lawn, that's gonna restrict traffic possibly? I'm concerned that you're gonna bring people in and you're gonna bring possible virus into the town, which we've been very lucky so far that we have not had anything. That's my only concern, not the concert, I think it's great.
Yeah, it was our.
The other.
Yo, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, the other reason I think it's important that, that you share your virus plan with uh, emergency services is kinda headed the same place Joe's going. You, if you put a hundred vehicles parked in there for an activity on your lawn, you're gonna restrict the flow of traffic through town. And, and at some point, they're gonna say, well, we can't get through with a fire truck or we can't get through with an ambulance, so. Same, it's the same issue, the event is creating a problem, it's just a different problem.
Right.
That I'm thinking about.
And, and, and has, and somebody needs to contact both fire and rescue to see whether or not they're comfortable doing this. I don't even, I mean, I, I'm not a member of the squad, but they might be some uncomfortable, people who would be uncomfortable going down there and putting their mask on and, and, and you know, doing what they have to go do and God forbid somebody has a heart attack or some other issue that happens.
Well, I just think it's kind of interesting because we heard Rich tell us how uh, law enforcement is important, the things they run into and, and then you uh, see on the internet where some lady really caused a scene because she was asked to wear a mask in a restaurant. Um, so it's, it's likely that that could happen, you know, somebody comes to it and they wanna participate and you're telling them they gotta leave, so.
It's a possibility, of course, that could happen, that could happen everywhere. You know, that could happen at the door of the town hall too. So we are following all of the guidelines that the governor's putting, putting out for an event and definitely it's up to um, Lisa and the V S O um, to do the due diligence with um, fire and rescue. Um, and uh, I'll circle back around and make sure that she's doing that. And yeah, I, I'm the health officer, you know, all organizations have, like a fire farmer's market has to have a health officer, so I'm, I'm the health officer and I'll have to be here. Um, to make sure that people, people will have to ask to be, to leave if they don't have a mask, um, and if they're not socially distancing.
And you're not per, per.
If they don't leave, then what?
Buy the mask?
Who's gonna enforce that?
Well, I think probably at a V S O concert, we, we won't run into that, but you're right. Um, it would be, it will be something that we would have to figure out what to do.
You have to remember though, Michelle, all of us have been cooped up, okay? No concerts, no activities, so all of a sudden word is out, there's gonna be a concert. You might not get a hundred fifty people, you might get three hundred fifty people.
Yeah, I already, yeah, I already talked to Lisa and the V S O about this. They will have to turn people away. Um, because they only can have a hundred and fifty people here and they're gonna have to have a quicker count.
That, that creates a problem too, is I mean, what are you gonna do? Tell everybody that they, if, if they stand on the road or something? I mean, you know, you, you have a, a lawn there that you're gonna say that that's gonna be sort of your, your participations place, but you have so much other area around. That, that becomes really, we used to do old square dances at the, at the firehouse and we had a rope around it and people used to just climb over the rope or they'd just be listening and dancing on the library lawn. Uh, you know, and they had to pay four dollars or whatever it was to, to be in the dance, so that's really hard to control.
I mean, why, why did they pick the library lawn rather than, you know, I mean, maybe the Wyndham Foundation didn't wanna do it, I don't know.
No, I talked to Bob Donald about it and they didn't approach the Wyndham Foundation. They wanted to have it in a smaller, more intimate setting.
More intimate isn't, goes against the virus.
Well, we, we think that we've put in some really, you know, some, some, we've, I called the state, I talked to V L T C, talked to ACC about it. Um, I, V S O has got their own um, stipulations as well about how to take care of things. So I think it will go over well. If it doesn't, then we will absolutely have to rethink using the library lawn for events like this.
Um, may I ask a question real quick? Am I allowed? I don't know. Can, can, um, who, are they selling only a hundred and fifty tickets? Is it a free concert? I missed parts.
It's a free concert.
Oh my gosh, and who's gonna know about?
Hundred people.
And who, how, how is that going to be controlled?
Only have a hundred and fifty people.
But what, so what are you gonna do with the people who show up that you have to turn away? Who's gonna, uh, the logistics of it sounds daunting.
What happens with, what happens, Michelle, when the people are turned away or they don't wanna come in and they're sitting on the bridge, listening to the music? I mean, what do you do? How are you gonna control this?
Joe, we can't even have an open slick men's meeting.
Exactly.
Right.
Well, that's just, that's just inside. So if people are far enough away, um, you can have things outside. If, you know, and if you don't have any, more than a hundred and fifty people on, on any one site, um, then you can go forth with these things.
It's the same distance inside as it is outside, that you have to be away from people.
Right, you have to be six feet away. Yeah, that's why we had Keith come down and um, you know, do the math. Uh, you, um, you, you can have a hundred and fifty people on the library lawn and they can all be six feet away from each other. So we've got.
Has the sheriff, has the sheriff been invited?
They're always at the concert.
Yep.
You may need them.
Yep, it's a good point, it's a good point.
Where are your porta potties gonna be?
No, no bathroom access. It's only an hour, it's only an hour concert.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not food and the big long extended event. It's, and it's also a quartet. It's not the V S O.
That ought to be revisited.
What's the date?
I would be thinking another venue, like the Wyndham Foundation's fields there at the ponds, it makes a lot more sense, quite frankly, but.
Well, I, this was uh, this was a request um, by Lisa and the whole library board talked about it. And uh, you know, contacted all of the agencies that would be connected with um, an outdoor event. And we uh, you know, got, got the guidelines and we're following all of them.
Well, I, I would certainly make sure you contact the sheriff, you contact the fire and rescue and make sure that, that, that you have a plan when four hundred people show up or two hundred, or a hundred and eighty, or whatever the case might be, how are you gonna handle all that and keeping traffic flowing and all that kinda stuff? Because that, it is a concern for the town, quite frankly. And, and, and there might be some people, there might be residents in this town who might not wanna have that kind of uh, influx of people in their town. I don't know.
Sure, I understand. Um, I think by and large, um, folks are happy to have a musical event in town. There are gonna be some folks who will be nervous about a, a bigger gathering, particularly if they saw that folks weren't wearing masks and socially distancing, which is why we've been very clear with the V S O that, that, that has to go out in the advance publicity, it has to be in the signage and there has to be a, a health officer enforcing here, um, and, and making sure that it happens. Um, I think that we have a lot of people coming into town as it is, uh, Joe. Um, we do, you know, we all know it. Um, so I, they, it, it seems like it's a problem having them in one place, but if we are wearing masks and socially distancing, it's, uh, you know, it's, we're following the guidelines. But it's a very good point about, um, you know, traffic. And I think that um, Lisa was thinking fire and rescue, but that, I think that's a very good point that, that sheriff would need to be contacted in case uh, that was needed.
Okay, I mean, if, you know, with, I think we've talked about it enough, so. You know, it's, I, I just hope everybody follows what they have to go do and we don't have a disaster, so.
What's the date, Michelle?
It's, it's August sixteen.
What time?
Four to five.
Oh my gosh, during the day? And, and what happens, now this raises another question. What happens if all these people wanna come into M K T and use the bathroom and go into the store and all this kinda stuff? I mean.
Well, if they wanna go into the store with their masks and buy things, I think that June would probably be thrilled. They won't be able to use the bathroom because she has a policy that, that nobody can use the bathroom and so there, there just isn't anywhere to go to the bathroom. People are really used to this, um, now, you know, driving around the state and I think people deal with it. Um, but I think that um, June would be happy to have people go up and buy things from M K T after a concert.
Can we move on?
Sunday, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Can we move on, guys, or?
Yep, too bad.
Alrighty, uh, village park. Um, before we get into the park, um, Alan, um, myself, Kathy, um, and Stan, we all visited, took the hike in the park and, and saw what the potential um, parking lot would be, what, what, we looked at ash trees and then it, it came to my, my, my thought came and I said to Alan, well, you only wanna go and do um, ash trees and that's about four grand, thereabouts, um, but there's so much other timber here in this park that needs to be harvested. And so the discussion came, well, why don't we move forward and, and get an estimate to see what, what is the potential revenue to, to do a, a complete logging job, which really needs to be done anyway? I mean, there's some beautiful oaks and maples and, and pines that, that are reaching their, their lifespan that need to be taken out. Um, so we decided to put this on the discussion first to see how everybody felt about doing a logging operation in the park. Before we went any further, asking the forester to give us an estimate. But that's how this got involved.
Hey, Alan, uh, before you can do any of that spraying, you have to log first too, if you're gonna log, don't you?
Um, actually, I think it's, it's desirable to do the spraying before you do the logging so that you don't have to fight through the slash and to knock it down before you uh, offer sunlight to the forest floor. So I think it actually would work better to do the um, invasive work before a timber sale.
Well, I thought the guy from Longview said the opposite.
Well, I guess we need clarification on that.
Well, he, I think what he was saying was that the equipment and all that and dragging the logs would spread it all around more. Even after you sprayed it.
Well, the, the, the point, Alan, though, is that if, if, if you decided to go forward, it's four thousand dollars. So wouldn't you wanna, wouldn't you wanna get at least a commitment of what you wanna do, what, what the potential sale, timber sale would be? And let's assume that the, the, the sale is, is thirty-five thousand dollars, well, then you take four thousand out of the thirty-five and that, that goes for the treatment of victims and the rest could either go into uh, building the parking area or some other uh, thing you wanna do in the park.
Um, that's one way of looking at it. I look at it, if we have nine thousand dollars right now in the fund for the village park, I think that's the right number. Um, we have money available to do the treatment and we could spend that. It's a matter of setting the priority of what to do first. We don't have enough money to, to do everything, so we have to decide what's the first step.
Well, I guess the real first step is how does everybody feel about even investigating whether we wanna do a logging project or not?
Well, I, I was gonna, you know, I, I think the logging thing is fine, but I think we gotta look back. I mean, this whole thing that how many select boards has this property gone through where nothing has been touched? I mean, this thing has sat there, this, this great piece of property and nobody's done a thing on it. I think we have to guarantee if we're gonna go up and start doing this work that the interest in this thing, either through some sort of commission or committee or something, that has to keep on going with it. This board could change come March and then, and the whole attitude can change. We'll spend four thousand dollars to do the invasives and then if, if it's not kept up, this whole thing stops. We end up like the sewer project, we invested thirty-some-odd thousand dollars, some almost twenty years ago or whatever it was, or more, and nothing ever happened. I, I think there has to be a way that if we're gonna do this, that this thing continues and there, and there's some sort of program in place that, that be it the interest, the enthusiasm for this, for the park, the trails and everything else is, is, is guaranteed to continue.
I, I don't know how you can guarantee what, how we are going to impose our feeling on a, on a future selection.
Well, I have no idea either, but I hate to see that.
We may, we, the five of us may feel getting rid of those invasives is our obligation. The next select board may think, hey, that's a wilderness area, we shouldn't do anything there. How do you, how do you know what the next group is gonna think? And how can we tell them what to do? I, I don't see it.
Unless you put it in a, a plan, like a five-year plan or a ten-year plan and they have to follow it.
Well, I, I think, I think there's a way that you could, that you could um, preserve the program as this present select board wants to do. But I think the real question now is before anything else is, is do you wanna learn? But I think the real question now is before anything else is, is do you want to log it as a select board? Because I think what you're facing is if we all voted today to, to do it, you probably can't log. I, I don't know, Alan, would you be able to log this fall or winter? Uh, or would it be the following year?
I, I think that's gonna, you would want that to be a winter logging operation.
Could you do it this winter?
I think so.
Okay, because, because after winter, the new select board comes in and they might not want to log anymore. But the point is, is that if you, if you know, if you knew there was X amount of money, 30,000, 20,000 from logging here, then you could go ahead and, and, and like Kathy says, put up a five-year plan and say, okay, we've got X amount of money. We're gonna, we're gonna build trails. We're gonna build a lean-to. We're gonna build a gazebo. We're going to do whatever we're gonna go do. And that's laid down and we can do that over a period of one, two, three or four years. But I think you have to figure out what, what's even, we don't mind even talking a lot of money. I have no idea. How much money is, is there a possibility if you did a, you know, a real good logging job of the timber there? And the only way you're gonna know that is to get a forester to give you an estimate.
I, I think too that, I think there's, there's, there's more to it than just going up there and seeing a, a skitter and a logger. I think you have to do a, some sort of a plan. I mean, I don't, I don't attempt to say that logging is sort of a willy-nilly event, but trying to create trails, we ought to try to get the, the, uh, the skitters or the equipment that's in there to create the trail. And then that becomes the use after that. So I, in my mind, I think there has to be some planning. Uh, and maybe you're not gonna get as much, uh, for the value of the, the timber. Cause a logger is just not gonna go up there and head straight down the hill as they would want to do with, with a load of logs. I mean, you gotta think about where are the trails going to be? What's this going to be in five years or 10 years? I, I think there's a lot of thought process involved, is the way I look.
I, I hear you.
Joe, this is Suzanne. May I make a comment and ask you a question? Thank you. So Al, with all due respect, I, to your knowledge of, of forestry, I'm just wondering, um, to what extent would Hayden be involved in a project like this? In, in other words, is the, is there, is there a step ahead of the decision to log? Uh, that is something like, what is the value of logging and to what extent should we log in that property? I mean, I just want to speak up for the trees for a moment. Um.
Here you go.
In the, in the, uh, in this community, over the past few weeks and months, the nature museum has been very active in, and library and, and, uh, educating the community about trees. We've all read and come together about books on trees and, and, um, I think there will be a lot of interest in this community on the environmental impact of logging that property. And I'm not suggesting that it wouldn't be the, a good thing to do. All I'm saying is that it seems to me there could be some, um, preparation steps that involve either Hayden or the nature museum or someone to help us understand the real value and environmental value of, of logging the village park.
Um, Hayden was involved and I think you missed a couple of meetings, but Hayden was involved. And, and Hayden decided he no longer wanted to be involved as a result of some of this pushback that you're already kind of hinting at. Um, he got some pretty nasty phone calls or phone call from one individual. And he said, I don't need to do this. So, um, but we did get ahold of a state forester who is, um, paid to work on state forest land as well as municipalities. And he has, he's been up there. He and I are the ones that laid out the potential, um, access, the potential parking area and marked the ash trees. He spent, uh, a day of, a full day of his time there. And he would be the one that would administer a sale if it was to happen. Um, so it is not just me. Um, there is a professional forester involved. Or has, but he needs, he needs direction from us as a select board that, uh, we would then speak for the public. We already know there are some that would like to see work done and, and cut timber cutting to improve the health and vigor of the forest. And we also know there are people that don't want to see any trees cut up there. Every dead hazard tree should be there for wildlife. So we know there'll be some people unhappy and there'll be some people very happy that we've taken some initiative to do some work. That's a decision the five of us have to make.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
Whether a year from now, the next select board has the same feeling, that remains to be seen. But building a plan and, and, and thinking the next, next, um, select board will follow our plan, it's a good idea. But if you go back to town plan, there was a town plan that was written by a group of people. And the new town plan is much different than that plan. So it's the same idea as the select board changing. The next group had a different idea of what was the town plan than the, the group that wrote the previous plan.
Yeah, so I'm not intending to go down the tributary of the town plan, but I do want to ask you just a clarification, two clarification questions. So first of all, uh, the forester, the state forester who is involved, is, is that, is that person representing the loggers? Or is that person representing the, uh, the land itself? Is that person interested in finding a balance between the ecosystem that's in that village park and the value and, and efficacy of logging that park? Or is the forester more a person representing the loggers? Would you just clarify that for me?
I wished you had been with me when I was there with him. Um, he, he's, he has, he has a, um, degree in forestry. He has, um, a reputation and he has to answer to a boss. And he knows that he has to do what's right for the environment and what's right for the forest. So he has responsibility. Um, and we had some pretty open discussion about what was their potential. Um, so, so I would say his, uh, outlook is to do what's right for the forest.
Suzanne, I think you have to understand that, and maybe because you have not had the experience. Um, if you're a landowner and you are gonna hire a forester and hire a, 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 a person to do the logging, you just don't, he just doesn't go in there willy-nilly. You give him parameters. You, and, and I just logged my property, um, this past winter. And one of the requirements, well, we couldn't disturb the vast trails and we couldn't disturb our hiking and horseback trails. And we logged without disturbing any of the trails. I mean, it's very possible. You just have to find the right logger and the forester or the person who is administering it sets the ground rules. And you follow it. You just don't let the guy go in there and cut. That's not how it's done. Now, maybe there are people who do that, but that's, that's, that's not the way I would certainly want to see it happen.
Yeah, that's not how, I, I, I hope that the select board does. If we pursue this logging in the village park, that there is a process you would agree to where there is such a, a, a step in front of inviting the loggers in to give their quote on how much that they can get for logging the village park. Because I remember Al, when we went on that, uh, hike up across from the town garage, they were marking the trees that could come and, and, and some of them couldn't come down. And then the loggers came and gave their estimate about what it would, what it would yield with Hayden's input in advance of their coming to give their estimates, right?
Correct. And, and so we would follow the same procedure if, if the select board chose to have a timber sale. Same procedure. The timber would be marked by the forester. What he felt was, uh, proper to harvest. And so the logger's not deciding which trees, the forester's deciding which trees. But we, we as a select board can give direction to the forester and say, we want all the ash gone because of Emerald Ash Borer, or we want this, or we want that. And then the forester would say, yeah, okay, that makes sense, or you have to think about this. Um, Tim's, Tim's the one that really, uh, brought up the issue with the invasives, um, and the, the impact of, of the invasives, so.
Okay, well, that sounds much better to me. I, 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 I hope that one of the steps is a similar tour with the forester to go through the village park like the public was invited to in the previous logging operation the town did. I thought that was a very helpful tour. And I also just want to close by saying I regret that Hayden had to experience, uh, a hateful phone call. Someone hit his position that it's, uh, it, it's sad to me that that would happen. What we're all seeking here is balance, not one thing, not all the trees being cut or none of the trees being cut. All we're seeking is the right balance.
Well, I'm sorry to see Hayden go too, but, um, I, I understand, I've been on the receiving end too and I know how it feels.
Yeah.
So the question comes is that do we want to pursue through the forester to have him come in and do a survey? And decide whether or not we should, when we want to go forward with the logging operations and then go in and make it, make a final decision? That's really the question on the table. Certainly not logging is we need to call Tim. Tim, correct, Alan?
Ti- Tim Mort- Tim Morton, M O R T O N.
Right, and, and then, um, have him come in and go through the park with marking and letting us know what the potential timber sale can be. And if we want to go forward with it, then he, as I understand, would then mark the trees and then we would find a logger who, uh, would, would, have got a bid from the logger, I guess. And that's the process, that's the way it goes, I think.
Wouldn't have to have some sort of a, of some sort of a basic idea of a plan of what we want. So that way when we go in with a forester, we can give him an idea of what the town, what the select board is, is, is looking to do as opposed to the forester telling us what, what he feels though should be done? I don't, we, I think we got a ways to go. I think we got to develop some sort of a plan of what we want to do up there. Then extend it into that five or 10-year, uh, 10-year plan.
Um, I don't know. My, my recommendation to Tim, i- if I was asked was, I would like to do an improvement cut. I would like to leave the forest healthier than it currently is. So I don't want to take all the great big oaks and all the great big trees. But some of them need to come out. Some of them are at the end of their rotation or near the end of their rotation. And they should be removed. Um, but I don't want to go in there and see we cut every big oak tree. I think some, we need some oak in there for, uh, wildlife. You know, when we were in there and saw that deer, the deer are there because there's some food there. So that's something you want to leave for other people to see. Um, but I think we need to cut some timber if we want to maintain a healthy stand. Otherwise, it's like having too many carrots in the garden. They all are little stunted little carrots.
But somewhere in there, you gotta do a patch cut. You gotta open it up so you can get this new browse and stuff. You know, do it for the bird or something, you know, maybe make a decision where that goes.
Well, my, my question is even before the timber sale. Um, we, we need a clarification. Do we do the, um, invasive work first or second? We need to get that clarification. If it turns out that the invasive should be treated before the timber sale, are we willing to spend $4,000? That's our, but, that's what the estimate was. Are we willing to spend that out of the money that we have? We have that much money. We actually have more than that much money already on hand.
Well, my, my answer to that Alan is somewhat taking Stan's position. I think we need, we, I think we do have a plan and the plan was to build a parking lot, staging area there to build a, what was it? A lean-to or something we were gonna build there? Uh, we, we were gonna restore or replace the gazebo and put maybe possibly some barbecues or whatever if the time permitted. And to restore the trails. So, now, I mean, that, that was a broad brush plan, but that was the plan. And, um, so if we want to, if, if we want to lighten that plan and make it more, uh, you know, more substantial, um, that's fine, but I think we do have the basic of a plan to, to go forward. And, um, and I don't think anybody, environmentalist or no environmentalist, nature museum or any wants to see evasives take over anything. And, and I had to tell you, on my own property, I didn't, I had no idea what some of these evasives were. And, and, and now that I know what they are, I've got evasives so much, so many all over my place. And I'm trying to eradicate them before they, what's the one with the little berries? That's, um,
Could, well, it could be, it could be buckthorn or it could be.
I've got buckthorn everywhere, particularly on the rock walls and whatever. And I'm, I'm, you know, through weed whacking and through herbicideing, I'm trying to evacuate, get rid of it all. And, and some of the stuff is huge and it just kind of takes over everything. So you certainly don't want that to happen. And, and I don't think anybody who, whether you're environmentalist or not, doesn't want to have evasives taking over the real thing. So what we really do need to do is decide, you know, maybe we need to come up with a, with an implanted writing and then make a decision on which, how we go. But I think we need to do something. I mean, I've been on the board since 1990 and I agree with Stan. I mean, everybody's talked about this and nothing, nothing's ever happened with the park. And you go up there, it's a beautiful place, but it's, it's grace. I mean, it's just been neglected. So I mean, I don't know how you want to proceed with this, but that's just my comments.
I, I, I pretty much agree. I'd love to move forward with it, but I just want to make sure that once you make that step, invest the money, that it, that it does move forward with some sort of a plan. I hate to think about, you know, establishing another committee or another commission as it might be. But maybe there's gotta be somebody that can move this thing, uh, you know, continue to move forward. Another group of people that can come up with a plan that can be, uh, approved by the select board or whatever. You know, these people walk the land, have maps or whatever and come up with some sort of a plan that can, that can be approved. The only problem with that is it's not gonna happen tomorrow.
Well, I mean, I, I don't, I don't see why Stan, why the, I mean, we have Alan here, we have, um, we have resources from the state. Why can't we come up with a plan ourselves? I mean, what do we need another committee for?
Oh, if, if, if you can do that. I don't know, me personally, if I want to put, you know, uh, the amount of time that's, that's required to do it. I'm not saying I wouldn't, but I'm just saying that right up front. You know, I got enough irons in the fire already. I mean, if there's enough for, for you guys want to say you're gonna get together and do it, I, I say let's, let's, let's do it.
Well, I think it's important that we have a, we have a plan. Could go with that plan. The evasives are just gonna get bigger and bigger if we don't do anything. Um, we've got Tim and Tim could survey the potential for some of those trees to come down and also do a patch cut for the birds. You could have a whole area, um, you know, inviting those birds coming in and the nature museum could take over that piece. Um, a lot of education can happen with, around those birds. And I learned a lot when we went on that walk. And it's kind of sad to see the neglect that's happened in there. Um, and it needs to be preserved. That's my thought.
I mean, I, I, in, in my own 300 acres, we did a couple of patch cuts and you wouldn't believe what's happening. I mean, the berries are coming in there now and, and, and all that kind of stuff. And, and, and I've improved my property so much for wildlife. I've got more wildlife than they're coming in now. and all that kind of stuff, and 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 I've improved my property so much for wildlife. I've got more wildlife in there coming in now because of the light that's coming in and and whatever, and it it's, people think logging is a terrible thing, but it is if it's abused. But to do a, as Alan says, a, I forget what the term was, but to do a selective logging job and and create a patch cuts and to bring back nature, uh it's it's a wonderful thing when you see what happens to it. I mean, I'm willing to work with Alan and to come up with a plan um that we could present at a future meeting. Uh I think we already have the basis.
I certainly wouldn't want to do anything before the whole select board says, go forward, you know. I'm not going to, I'm not going to go up there with Tim and make big decisions and 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 say, oh, yeah, Skitter's moving in tomorrow, so um. But I I also think there's enough in the plan that it can't all be done at once, and so setting some priorities of this needs to happen first, set the sequence of what needs to happen. I think uh I think the invasives are are pretty high on my list, that they should be taken care of first. But John, you you heard different than I heard, so we need to get clarification on that.
You know, we keep on talking about the plan, and I know that the plan has been talked about. Uh I guess, for me, a plan is something that I can actually pick up and say, okay, step one is, step two is, step three is, on some sort of a a piece of paper, I think that everybody and and get it approved. I think everybody has a different thought process of what the plan may be.
Well, I'm I'm kind of asking for you to help me formulate a plan, because I threw out a whole bunch of things, and I think there's more things to do than we can do uh all at once, and so I'm asking for some input of, yeah, let's do the invasive first, let's you know, the lean-to can wait, or or you know, let's do the timber sale, let's get the parking area done, you know. That's what I'm asking for. Some direction from the rest of the select board.
Well, that's my thought.
Does anybody have an objection if Alan and I sit down and put this, put this plan that we've been wrestled around uh in paper uh and then presented either at the next or whatever, you know, some future meeting, and and then we can go forward with it and maybe put some timelines on it? Is that agreeable to everybody?
Fine with me.
Yep.
I think we got, we have to do something. We have to move in some direction.
Yeah.
But I mean, I'm I'm just, I I just, I just, I just look at that park and it just breaks my heart to see that thing is left it so bad, and it just needs to be fixed.
Well, I agree, and I and I do trust um Al for all his opinions on what to do. I mean, he's very knowledgeable. He's been in the in the forestry business for a long time. Knows what he's talking about. Um and I trust what, any ideas he comes up with.
So Alan has got, Alan has got the ideas. I'll I'll, we'll work together and I'll put him in writing, and then we'll have Bill go over it, and before you know it, we'll have it, we'll have a plan in writing that we can all discuss. And we'll 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 and we'll put what we think on there, and then you could, you could change the plan any way you want to do it. And and we'll just put some timelines and try to get to a a resolution.
I like that idea. Let's let's try to have something, let's have something for the board to look at for next meeting.
All right, well, let's let's let's, I say, future meetings. I mean, I don't want to, you know, we all got things to go and do, so you know, whether it's done this meeting, but let's do it post haste. Let's put it that way, within the next month.
Well, if we wait until everything we want to do is done, we'll never get to work at it, so I would like to get started. It may not be a finished product, but I'd like to have something to look at for the next meeting. We've been talking about it for how long now?
You and I will sit down, we'll get a date together, okay?
Okay, sounds good.
All right, uh so can we move on now to the planning commission?
Is that agreeable with everybody?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, I think I heard it was, yeah.
Okay.
Planning commission, do we have uh anybody here from the planning commissions?
Dave Culver was supposed to be. Dave Culver was sent to invite this afternoon, uh and uh let me see, let me see who's here, because I can't see them all. Suzanne.
No, he's not on there.
Nancy. Galen. No, there's no one here.
I I don't know.
At this point, I think we should just pass this. If we don't have somebody from the planning commission to actually discuss this.
I agree. I couldn't agree more.
Thank you.
Can I just say one thing before we pass all this? I have the village um designation program, and I know, Joe, you are interested in what it's all about and what it can give the town of Grafton. If you want me to copy this.
No, I have that plan.
You have it?
I have a copy, but I just, I want to hear the planning commission tell us why they need it. I know what it does, but what is it going to do for town?
Well, for the economics, for one, and also it it opens up all the grant possibilities. And we just talked about the park, and it has conservation grants.
Okay, so but why can't the planning commission come and talk to the board?
I don't, I can't answer that.
No, can I? So let's put them on for next meeting and let's keep going with this thing, and let's hear them.
Does anybody else want a copy of this? If you haven't have it?
Yeah, I'd like one, Kathy.
Okay.
Yeah, I, yeah, too, actually. I don't remember if I got.
Yeah, they handed that out, Stan, a year or so ago when we gave the letter to the planning commission that we would give them permission to seek um whatever they.
I don't.
This was nineteen, so I think it was in March last year.
Alan, you have something to say?
Yeah, you remember the email that Dave Culver sent to all of us? And uh he asked for some input or some feedback from us, and he asked because of uh the open meeting law that we send the comments to him individually. Some of us sent them individually and some didn't. I sent mine individually to him, and uh he thanked me for them and thought that I brought brought up some good questions, but the rest of you didn't see them. My questions to him was if we were to go forward with uh village designation, does that make it easier? Or does it make it more difficult if eventually we have village septic, village water? Um would it 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 it? I don't know. So but but I think sooner or later, one of those is going to happen, village water or village septic. Um that would be a question. Maybe it makes it easier to do. I don't know.
And that's all mentioned in the village designation for the grants for water. So we're we're there's a lot in this report that's significant that could benefit the town of Grafton.
Well, I disagree, but if I were.
Three or four things to him, and he he thanked me, and I I'm a little disappointed. I expected he would be here to comment on those things to all of us.
Yeah, so I'm a little concerned, because if they really want this to happen, or they want, they're very interested in it, why aren't they coming to the select board? And that kind of disturbs me.
One thing I found to be, I I thought terribly missing, and this was just the map that he sent out. One of our biggest uh commercial operations, if if there's a possibility of getting some sort of a grants or anything through the village designation, I suggested to him that the Grafton Village Cheese is totally left off of the um village designation. Now, that's one of our bigger or could potentially be the biggest commercial operation that we have in town. And and if there's any grants or anything, Grafton Village Cheese is not included in that village designation.
Particularly in the light of that they're closing the broader oil plant and moving, trying to move their property here. And so that operation could possibly go back to where it was ten, fifteen years ago.
Yes, and they're and they're not included in that village designation in the map, so my, that was a big concern.
There's a quarter of a mile from the village is included, what they call the designated neighborhood development area. So I would think the cheese company would come under that.
I don't know. That's a good question, but they need, somebody needs to tell us.
Well.
Well, we need them. I think we ought to just, yeah.
We'll put them on the, we'll put them on the agenda again, and we'll take a look and see what happens.
Yes.
Kathy, this is Suzanne. Would you send me a copy of the report, please?
Yeah, I'll have it at the town hall.
Okay.
Okay, the next item is the cemetery land. Um as I understand, talking to Bill, we have not heard back from Tim Muller yet.
Correct.
So that kind of sits there, and we don't really know, according to John and Danny, uh they walked the property and there were some red flags. We don't know what they are for, whether it's wetland, whatever. So right now, there that we're at the mercy of getting Mr. Muller. Uh there were um two other, uh three other possibilities that were suggested. Um one was the Middletown Cemetery expansion to Street is property. I looked at that. That certainly is a possibility, but it creates all kinds of issues. It's, first of all, it's a forested piece, so it has to be cleared. And the road that goes down there, I don't know who owns that. That was thrown up back in eighteen seventy something. And I don't know whether or not Grape owns half and and Street owns half, or who owns what. So that 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 creates that a bit of a problem. Um there was uh the other piece that was suggested, I think, I don't know, was John or Bill?
It was a Houghtonville Cemetery.
Yeah, that P uh P and L Trucking, I think owns the property.
Primarily.
A partner.
This land is for sale, and I don't know if that's been sold or not, but he borders Houghtonville Cemetery.
I think that is in contract.
I think it's sold.
It's in a contract.
Okay, well, that's a possibility.
Well, if it's sold, then it's delayed.
It has sold, just to let you know.
Yeah, I thought so, yeah.
But that's still a possibility.
Yeah, I guess you could talk to the new owners.
Yeah, and and the other one was Cobb Cemetery. And who borders that is Mosley, and she was going to build a house there, and she died. And it was cleared by Arrow, and so there was a possibility there. You know, just as you go in, Alan.
Yeah, I know exactly what you're saying. Yeah.
I think, wasn't that Mosley that owned it?
Yeah, but isn't there a piece of that that's church land? And and Mosley had um uh there was some piece around the cemetery that was church land, and I.
Yeah, but I think that's over, Alan. That that's gone now.
Hmm?
I think that's. I think the church land property is over. I don't think it exists anymore. Yeah, I mean, it's 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 not a factor. But if somebody, you know, one of the Perkins daughters, the one that lives out there, what's her name? I forget. Um there's another.
Priscilla.
Yeah, Priscilla, but there's another lot for the other daughter that's next to it somewhere that was never built on as well.
I think that's the lot that John's talking about.
Yeah, that's the one, okay.
I'm tired, just as you go in on Hall Ranch Road on the right-hand side.
That's the one, then.
Just before the cemetery.
But those are three, yeah, but those are three other possibilities that we maybe should be contacting the owners and asking them.
Yeah, so the reason why it's on here is that perhaps if it's okay with the board, then we can have Bill send a letter to these owners asking if they have any interest in selling or donating their land for a cemetery.
I'm agree, I'm with that.
Sure. What harm would that do?
Well, there's no harm, but you certainly don't want to do it without board approval.
The the Burgess Cemetery is you don't have to go in too far, and then you pitch down the hill, and then you run into a lot of water. It is wet. Water was running really good when we were there. So I don't know how much of that with red flags around there too is available, you know, for extending the cemetery.
Make a big pond out of it.
Yeah. But I I wondered if you can't, maybe can't do anything in that area.
Well, we have to wait for Muller, but but does anybody have an objection if we send letters to these three individuals and see if if they have any interest? They will, all they can do is say no.
I think it's, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
You know, whether it's suitable or not, at least if they say yes, then you can go out on a field trip and look to see if it's suitable. If they say no, then you don't have to do it.
Right.
Well, you can send the letters to them, but on top of that, um on the Vermont Atlas, there there's a layer in there called soil types. And so like that area you talked about, John, that was wet, that would show up on there. You can see a lot of it just without without even stepping foot on the land, and then you know, say, okay, this looks like we ought to go do a site visit. Save some time.
That that reduced the area at uh Burgess considerably, because there was quite a lot of wetland there.
Wha- what about the area before you get to the cemetery where the log landing was?
Yeah.
Yeah, that that's, but but I don't know, you you had, he he doesn't want to sell it separate. He wanted to sell the whole thing.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So you got to purchase a whole lot, and we were, why we were looking is if you're going to purchase a whole lot and it was good gravel and sand there, it'd be well worth purchasing.
Right, it's washed sand, that's what I'm.
We can't do anything until we hear from Muller to give us permission to do the four test pits that that Danny and and um and John, I think, laid out. So let's see what happens for that. But if it's okay, I don't know, do we need a motion to send these letters or is this an agreement to just?
You don't need a motion.
Okay, so. So we all, we all set to just have the, go out these three, these three parcels? And then if there's anything else that you know of, let us know, and then we can send the letters to them too as well?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All righty. Okay, and then there was an alternative, and Bill sent pictures. Is this, I don't know how to pronounce it, columbrum?
Lombarium, yeah.
I mean, that is another issue. I mean, that is another possibility.
I don't see it here, but maybe.
Well, I think, uh if you look at the pictures, let me put this one up. Uh there are settings like we have in our park. If you looked at all those pictures, there are settings, like this one, wait a second, let me put it up. Like this one, and it uh and there are others that are just not that. Just outdoor spaces. Let me go the other way. Just outdoor spaces that can be used next to buildings, next to parks.
There is.
You know, that you can put them anywhere, and they could be any design you want.
Uh there is a, there is a a possibility. Um since I served on the Brick Church Committee, there was talk at one time of putting a small cemetery behind the brick church. Um but that doesn't seem possible, because that's an alternative site for the chapel's uh septic system. But you could, I mean, yeah, I can't speak for the brick church. But you you could put something like that behind the brick church and and make a garden out of it, and that could become a cemetery for whatever it is, twenty, thirty people who want to be going there. I mean, that is a possibility if they would be willing to do that. I don't know.
That that's not Grafton, Joe.
Huh?
That's not Grafton.
And and I agree, it's not Grafton, so, but.
It it, okay.
But anyway, that that's.
There's there's also, there's also the Window Foundation wants to get rid of the village garden, and that could be another location. But it's not Grafton, I hear that. Loud and clear, John.
Anyway, all right.
All right, hey, before you, before you leave the cemetery thing, I did, we did get this thing from Debenaro that I thought was maybe more expensive than anybody anticipated being to do the survey. Uh if I just have it here, should I contact him and say that uh at this point, we're not going to do it?
I would.
Was that the one that was fifteen thousand, Stan?
Well, it was, yeah, it was almost fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there there is, there is, you know, obviously, it's a lot of money, but there is some issue there. I mean, we really don't. is some issue there. I mean, we really don't really have a good handle on who's buried where and what things are. So I don't know if it's worth 15,000, but we do have liability, I think.
Oh, I, we, I think, I think something is absolutely has got to be done. Uh, but I'm looking at now the possibility of this thing that the, the listers are doing. If that can show a decent enough, um, yeah. That's why I specifically asked about town properties. I did go on a site that Alan recommended. And at that, but I might not have been doing it properly. But anyway, I, I'd just like to let him know one way or another that he could say, uh, we'll keep this in mind or something to that effect, or what do we want to do with it?
Uh, my goal would be just to let, you know, say, listen, we're still discussing it. Let's, you know, and see what happens with this map and.
Yeah.
And, and whatever. I wouldn't, I wouldn't turn it off and I wouldn't, I wouldn't turn to say yes, so.
Joe, have we, have we got the records yet from Don?
No.
You have to ask him. I don't know. She was supposed to meet with him as far as I know.
She's not here.
No. So I'll check with her tomorrow. I can't do it to, yeah, tomorrow. I'll check with her tomorrow, John, or Bill will.
In the end, we may want to go back to Devo, but it seems like we could collect a lot of information and, and get it in a good organized fashion to streamline the amount of work that he needs to do to put the final stamp on it.
That's a good point.
Yeah, that's a good point, Alan. I got, I have to, I have to be in town tomorrow morning for a meeting with Mary Fetter. I'm not sure why, but, um, anyway, I will, um, I will check with Kim and see if we have where the situation with all the maps are and done. And I'll let you know. I'll let Bill know and you can let her know, okay? Can we move on to the tree warden?
Yep.
We can get volunteers, huh?
No one. Not beating the door down?
Nope. So, I mean, not that we.
So you can just skip it right now.
But what's the next step? Any, any, any ideas?
Uh, send the, send the constable out to arrest somebody and force him to be a tree warden? I don't know. No one wants to be tree warden. No one wants to be tree warden.
I, I think you should appoint Danny and then Danny can appoint his two, two workers to assist him.
That's a, that, that's one thing. I know that they don't want it at all, but that is a solution.
Well, nobody wants that.
Oh, he had a tree warden for 20 years, but until something came up to do, they decided not to do it.
Right, right. Um, well, on the, on the more serious side, until there is a tree warden, it really reverts back to us, the select board.
Yep, correct. Yep.
Yes, that's correct.
So right now, let's, let's just, we, we are, we, we have the issue. We don't have any volunteers. We could run the ad again, just to see, maybe people were a little timid in it. And let's put it on, you know, for a meeting down the road and see what happens.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll have her rerun it.
Some other ideas will come to us. Maybe somebody will jump out of the woodwork. Okay, um, what's this response to the VLC? Oh, that's the one that, that Kathy and I didn't like. The resolution Grafton. Back on again, guys. So do we, what, we, can we, if VLC take a response?
Well, they were, they were, that's the one they were.
All I can do is you, I, I sent, all I can say is I sent all the correspondence to you. You five should have read the correspondence. It's up to you five to decide, do you want to respond to it or not?
Me, I, 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 I agree with Kathy. No, I don't like the idea. I, I don't like the state has got more things going on and whatever. And to me, it's a no, but that's just me.
Well, didn't we have five no's?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
We had five no's.
Well, you had five no's, but after I re-asked, I only have two no's. So.
What was, what was that, by email?
Yeah, I sent it all to email. The only people I heard back from was Joe and Kathy.
I, I understand. I was just, I was just asking how you did it. You did it by email.
Yeah, because I sent you her email and said, what do you guys want to do?
All right. So the question is, do we want to have a response or not?
No.
No.
No?
No.
We voted.
No. Okay, yeah, five no's.
Okay.
Move on. Do we have any other business?
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, Joe, Joe, okay, Joe and I are gonna meet with somebody on Wednesday with regard to a, a, a program for helping us do budgets. But I had, I don't know anything about it. They're gonna do a virtual thing and Joe and I are gonna sit on it, in on it. I'm not excited about it. Joe's not excited about it, but we're just gonna see what it is and what it costs.
And Kim, and Kim's not excited about it, but I.
Kim's not excited about it either.
Bill and I talked this morning that I think, I think it would behoove us to at least listen for a half an hour presentation to see if it's something we want to consider. I have no idea what it costs and I have no idea what it does at how it can help us. We've done a budget for the last, um, how long has Grafton been around? So I don't know why somebody's gonna help us, but maybe things are better, who knows?
Is this through VLCT?
No. It's a private company and it's a, it tells you how to sell your budget. So it, I don't think we need it, but, and if you guys say, we don't think we need it, then we won't even do it on Wednesday. I'll just call them and say, forget it.
No, not if it's a private company. They're gonna charge money.
It's a tr- it's a private company. Somebody wrote some software. It's gonna cost the town money. And they're gonna tell you how to do your budget and how to tell the people at town meeting why your budget is going up. I, I assume this is what it is.
Well, if you look at what I sent you, you can see what they will produce. I sent it all to you guys to look at.
There's a lot, a lot of stuff it can do, but is it really, do we really, does Grafton really need that? I mean, we did pretty good over this.
If you look at what I sent you, it shows that Grafton per capita spends a hell of a lot less money than, than, uh, than any other town, practically any other town, but more, less than the median town does per capita in the town. We spend less. That, that's just, but does that do any good? No, because the budget's still too damn high. So I, that's what I'm saying. If, I don't want to make a decision that you don't want something without you guys looking at. That's why I sent it to you to look at.
And that's why I figured I would, Bill and I would spend the half an hour. But if you people, if, if the rest of the board says, forget it, then believe me, I have better things I can do.
Yeah, I have better things to do. If you don't mind, I'd say, look at it for a half hour. Look at it. And, and you may already know the answer, but maybe you'll be pleasantly surprised that, wow, this is really something we ought to have.
Well, that was my, that's why I'm gonna do it with Bill.
Yeah, I, I, I'd encourage you to look.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I got one thing. Uh, Stan.
What, John?
Yeah, I got a question for Stan.
Yep.
Uh, I've been waiting for you to get back to me with a date so that we can meet on what's been going on at the town hall.
I mean, I've just been waiting for the, this whole thing, the, the virus thing to sort of blow over. I guess we're getting to a point now where we can, I don't know, whatever works for you now, if you want.
You name, as I said before.
I'll send you an email. We don't have to do that now.
Okay.
I'll, I'll get back to you and we'll, we'll do that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other business? Do we have any public comment? Suzanne Welsh is gone. So the next, next meeting is, um, July 20th, um, at, um, at the, uh, team.
Joe?
Yes.
Um, I wonder, even though we can't, um, meet at, at face to face, I, I wonder when we can at least go back to our six o'clock meeting. Um, if you look at the attendance, I, I think, I think having it three o'clock, uh, curtails some participation. I know you like it at three, but, um, I think if we want Publix to be involved, not all Publix in Grafton sit at a computer all day long. And some people actually have to work. And I think if we're having a meeting at three o'clock, we're not allowing those people that work to participate.
I can agree to that.
Yeah, and I, I don't think that's a bad idea. I think we, we can start phasing and we start phasing it in back to original meeting schedules again. So, I, yeah.
Even if, even if we're still doing it by, uh, virtual, you know, still doing it on the computer, but at least we could move the time back to six o'clock.
It's fine. That works for me.
So, so why don't we, why don't we try the July 20th at six o'clock and let's see how, what participation we get and then, then make a decision from there.
Works for me.
Yeah.
Okay.
So July 20th, what time? At six?
Six o'clock.
Okay.
Okay? And, um, since we have no other, can we turn?
Make that motion.
Okay, Alan? And who seconded it?
Second.
Dan? Got that, Bill?
Jo- John got it.